Order the Nelson City Council meeting for June 24th, 2021. Start with a word of prayer. John Oliver, would you say a word of prayer for us, please?
What? One more prayer?
Thank you.
So Heavenly Father, we just come to you today with confidence. As we know, you have a plan for us in this city. And that you are with us and your desire is that truth and peace and joy is going to rest over this all members of this council. And that the veil of this people will be down. So you are going to find everything that has been Jesus' name prayed. Amen.
Would you like to pledge your name?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
How many motions for the agenda for tonight?
Give a second.
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Mr. Kidd, could you come up? I'm sure that we've got some questions that the council wants to ask you. If you've got anything for us, though, prior to, I know you were going to come and look at the park and discuss drainage. If you want to, you can stand.
Sylvia, can you turn that, you might cut here and end it back there.
Sorry about that. So go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Michael Kidd. I'm a landscape architect, owner of Root Design Studio. We did a master plan for Pickens Street Park a couple of years ago. Here tonight to talk about that plan and answer any questions that you may have. I've also got a, my civil engineer, David Friedman, is here tonight as well, who can talk to drainage and stormwater issues if there are any questions about that. Do you want me to give an overview of the plan itself?
Yes, please.
Okay. So what we did is it's a fairly simple plan. It's a small piece of property. There's an existing, very small basketball court that's there now that's fenced in with a gravel parking lot. So we looked at making some improvements to add a little bit more parking and to do a nicer basketball court there that's a, that would be an actual half basketball court with a fence around that. The master plan shows a basketball court that is, it's a half youth court, so it's not quite a high school court. There is room, we believe, to do a high school, a half-high school court. It's only a couple of feet difference, so we think we could actually accommodate that. I don't think there's enough room to do a half-college or pro court, but we can get a much bigger court than is there now with a nice surface, a new basketball goal, a nice fence around the court itself with a sidewalk. And we had proposed a little pavilion up behind the water tank, the water tower that's there. Whether or not that's a covered pavilion or an area with some picnic tables, kind of depends on the budget and how the project unfolds, but that's what we've proposed. There are lots of different ways to do those pavilions, different sizes. You can do prefab, custom-built, or it could be a slab or an area of gravel with some picnic tables, some umbrellas, something like that. Basically, it's there to designate a seating area for the park. If somebody comes to play basketball, if they have a younger sibling that's not going to be playing, or somebody else that's there that wants to use the park without the basketball court, that's primarily what that area is for. That's really the gist of the plan itself.
Yeah, I'm glad the rendering also shows the pickleball court, the eight degree wood and stuff.
So that wasn't part of our original master plan, but we've talked about that since then. Even at the size that it is now, a half-youth court, you could stripe that to accommodate a full-size pickleball court. If we went to a half-high school court, then both of those would be contained in the same footprint. So you could easily accommodate a pickleball within the space that's there. And that's really just a matter of striping. You don't have to do anything different with the surface, and then it could be used for different events.
Were you able to get a cost on the court for a multi-court like that?
The cost really wouldn't be a whole lot different from what we had in the original estimate for striping a half-basketball court. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. I've got it in my bag, but I think it was around $2.25 a foot for the striping.
No, I mean for the half-basketball court. Do you, when I spoke with you, I asked you if you could get us a cost on just going to work.
Let me get that estimate quick.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I have it here.
He was going to get them right today because it's been a bit since they did it.
All right.
I apologize. It might be in my car. I think. Yeah, if you can do a little. I'll check and make sure. If I don't have it tonight, I apologize. I can get that to you as soon as I get back to you.
We're waiting on that. You guys have any questions for Michael Kidd?
So do you see any drainage issues up there with paving that part in law, doing all that, turning the water down?
There would be additional impervious surface, so there would be additional runoff. That said, with my engineer that's on the team, we would be required to handle the, any stormwater drainage based on the Georgia Stormwater Manual. So all that would have to be accounted for. And if we're over 5,000 square feet of impervious surface, which I believe it's pretty close, then we're actually required to do detention to make sure that there's no additional runoff from the project downstream.
We got a lady at the bottom of Hill Cherokee Avenue that's having serious flooding issues every time it rains, and anything added to her is just causing more problems. And that was supposed to have been addressed a couple of years ago. Didn't Jeff look at it or was it our last engineer?
We did. And it's, there's another, from my understanding, we've got another phase. That's phase three that'll happen. We did phase one, and then phase two will be the Kennesaw Avenue. Phase three will be when they take it through, I believe, School Street.
No, this, I'm talking about.
You're talking about Cherokee.
Miss Anger on the bottom of Cherokee that's having all the problems every time it rains.
And it'll have to, so phase one was coming down, phase two is this one, and then it'll come, they'll finish the rest of it. It couldn't be done at the time because it would have overloaded what we had down here. So that'll happen, and so that, you will address that during your engineering phase of the project?
We would, and David can speak to that a little bit more. There was a question in the community.
What would you put as a detention pond add on that problem?
There was a question about the drain engine, how we would handle the stormwater runoff.
Yeah, good question. Obviously, as we get more into it, we would figure things out, but it looks like we're over 5,000 square feet of impervious surface, which means, I assume the city would want us to follow the Georgia Stormwater Manual. And basically, what that says is that the post-development runoff cannot exceed the pre-development runoff. So we'd somehow have to retain that stormwater. There's not enough room out there for a pond, so just preliminary, looking at it, probably some kind of underground detention or some kind of drainage swales or some combination. But it's such a small area that will be paving, so if we did underground detention, it wouldn't be a huge cost, I don't think, but that's probably what it would be. If you're moving underground detention, it's basically a ditch with a pipe with holes in it and gravel, and the water goes in there and stays in there a certain amount of time, and then it flows out at, there's a weir and it flows out at a predetermined rate.
Like I said, and we've already got a label with the problem right now, and anything we add is just going to make her problem a whole lot more serious.
Right. And our goal would not, would be to not do that, but you know, the Georgia Stormwater Manual, it's pretty rigorous, and you have to design for the 100-year storm, and you know, I don't know what the 100-year storm is in this area, but you're probably somewhere, I would guess, 10 inches per hour rainfall, so you know, I would think that if you did get that storm, that we would, our side would be okay. What happens in the rest of the city, you know, we couldn't account for, but probably, you know, the amount of runoff everywhere else would be minimal compared to what we were holding on our side. But that's a very good question.
So are you saying that it's manageable if you do the drainage, like you said, that the water, that small amount could be managed?
Yes, yeah. Again, without going all the specifics of the Stormwater Manual, but you have to retain different storm events. So like, there's like the first one inch you retain for so long, and there's a 25-year storm and a 100-year storm. So yes, I don't think you'd see any increase in runoff under normal rainfalls or excessive rainfalls.
Does your plan include hanging the tower, the water tower?
I don't remember if we had that in our original estimate. I don't think it was part of the park master plan. That was a separate.
It's a real eyesore. It's like putting a lipstick. If you put some pretty flowers around it, a nice park, and you leave that rusty thing up.
Can you tell us more about the water tower?
I don't really know much about the water tower because that wasn't, I mean, basically, we were working around that as sort of an existing condition.
And I'll answer to that. I've had several calls in this last month with regards to the water tower. Is it, is it, is the structure safe? The fact that it's an eyesore, it shoots water, things like that. So I'm looking at the contract now. Soon as I get it back, I'll look at the contract, and then we'll have to get it studied up to see if it's, if it's safe. If it's not, then we'll have to bring it back to the council and look at our options. But it is on my list of things to do.
But if it is safe for the city, then fix it up, maybe?
It could be. It depends on our contract, if our contract, what our contract says, and if we can amend it. And that's going to be a question back to Jeff. I actually have an email in to him now with the concerns, and he and I'll tie off. And I'll, and I'll come back with something at our next meeting, which will be in July.
Is this just open forum? Any questions?
You can. This is a discussion.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for the architect and maybe a couple for council.
If you'd state your name and your address and...
William Taylor, 83 Barrel Way.
Okay.
Just looking at the design, I got the flyer in the mail the other day, and I guess some organization here in Nelson come around putting flyers out on the mailboxes in our community, which is a violation of law, of course. You're not supposed to do that, encouraging people to come here and speak out for it. Just in basic design, I see stormwater was going to be an issue to bring up. I mean, you're probably be going to what, you're saying you go over 5,000? Has the city thought anything about maintaining an underground detention pond? They had any cost to the project? It sounds like it hadn't even been brought up yet.
It hasn't because we haven't had, we don't have engineering drawings. The only thing we have so far is a rendering.
But it's not a pond, or are you familiar with?
Yes, very familiar. Very familiar. Now, do you know you have maintenance issues over the years, stuff like that, that the city be taking home? Another question on the design, I see no ADA aspects in your design. You're opening the city up to federal and some state civil lawsuits with your design there, as I can see. Of course, I know it's preliminary, no ADA parking, no access to the pavilion areas, that kind of thing.
So the access is from the parking to the basketball court as the primary amenity of the site?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't show any accessible parking, striping on the rendering, but that would certainly be accommodated. That area where the parking and the basketball court is, is all basically.
Yeah, I don't think you have any problem, Greg. Like I said, I just noticed it's showing nine. You can't accommodate nine with ADA.
Have we gotten any trouble for not having any access for our long basketball court?
I have no idea. Like I said, I just got a flyer on my mailbox. I wasn't even coming until I got that. Like I said, looking at the design and noticing things, like I said, you can, a couple of different avenues to get sued right there.
But by law, we have to design to ADA standards, and we have a lot of experience doing that.
That's right. Like I said, if you're showing nine parking spaces, you can't do nine if you accommodate ADA parking.
True. Correct.
At nine, you'd have to do a van accessible site.
Right. You're right.
And then the walkway from the basketball to the upper area, that would be graded accessible, ADA accessible, right?
Yeah, so it shows stairs.
To the pavilion area?
Yes.
Currently, it's showing stairs on the plan.
But it could be graded to...
It potentially could be graded out to make that work. Again, we didn't have a topo of the site to do the master plan, so we did the best we could with field observations to get a rendering done. That was the scope of that particular project.
I know a lot of renderings. I generally like to see.
It's my understanding that topo happens with the construction drawings. Is that correct?
Typically, yeah.
And on the issue of, of the person whose property is already impacted with water, that is addressed as part of the third phase of the chemical project? Is that correct? Just to make sure I understand all the facts.
Does the city put any thought into, if you're making a multi-use court, how you're going to schedule usage or anything? So if you go with a larger court, two or three people come up, they want to have a pickleball tournament, but you've got other people wanting to play basketball, fights break out?
We haven't had any issues like that, and people...
I always try to plan for the worst. I just ask questions, but you know how people are these days. You get, people won't shoot basketball.
We haven't had any issues with people doing that. I mean, if somebody's there using it, then they wait their turn, or they come back at middle of the year time. We haven't had any issues that I know of.
And then now they pickleball kits, when you leave a hole in the ground under the side, they make kits that go into holes, and the nets just pull.
I've never played for it. I don't really think that's a game. I was just wondering.
They make kits that pull it across, or it's into another hole, so it's always removable easily and torn down easily.
And like I said, I just know what the city was thinking about, any liability there. Get fights breaking up because these want to shoot basketballs. You got a single facility of multi-use or a scheduling layout, anything like that.
Do you have any questions, council?
We have no cost to ask, unless you're anything.
The only thing that I'm waiting on, and I can email it to you tomorrow, is a cost for the multi-court. We're not voting tonight anyway. It's just a session to ask. Any questions that you need to ask or want to ask?
I did an initial investigation into the cost of putting in either asphalt or concrete court, according to that scale there. It runs anywhere from 20 to $3,000, depending on the material you want to use and how it's striped. And the stripe would be done in a permanent way, like we see on the roadway with a bike path that's green, that's embedded into the asphalt. There's two different processes that arrange anywhere from 20 to $30,000 approximately to do between concrete and asphalt.
All these people, there's got to be some more questions, please, who came all the way up here.
I just have a general question.
If you could stand and just say your name.
My name is Chris Ball, 4th Avenue, Blue Ridge. I just wondered, just generally speaking, whether they do pickleball or whatever, just is there an appetite to just make that area more attractive in general, including paying the water tower? It's just a really bad eyesore. It's just my thought. And I'm all for the recreation part of it, don't get me wrong, but...
Understand.
Lamar Kellit, I have a couple of questions. What height fence do you envision it would be on this?
That would be at least eight, 10 feet.
Is there kind of a standard that other parks use?
Yeah, we would make sure that the height of the fence is standard to basketball.
Okay. The surface will be a, also the state-of-the-art surface, not bare concrete or...
Surface, there, like you said, there are different ways to do that, and depending on the budget, you know, some courts are asphalt that's been painted or sealed. Some courts have a special finish over that material. So that's, that really ends up being a budget consideration.
But I would suggest if the budget can stand it, that we use later state-of-the-art, more user-friendly, because it's very rough, concrete particularly, on the joints and the surface that you'll find parts all over the country, the ones that are having good designs, will be some sort of additional surface to just the art finish that's been on.
Thank you, sir.
By the way, just from my opinion, I haven't heard anything yet that's insurmountable as far as continuing on the project of that, because the only two issues that have been, you know, top of the list are funding and runoff. If we have funding, you know, runoff, something can be managed.
Steven Johnson.
My name is Steve Johnson from Lower Lakes. Has the city council spoken to you about the possibility of restroom facilities on the site?
None at this location.
Do you have any kind of clue as to what that could run in the budget if they decided to go that route? Are we talking 15,000, 20,000? Are we talking much more?
Yeah, we have a lot of experience with restrooms in parks, and the cheapest that I know that you can do a restroom today, just one, like two bathroom stalls.
Right.
Is north of $100,000.
That's crazy.
We've gotten quotes recently that are 250 for small restrooms.
Right.
Prefab, it seems to make no difference what it, you know, what type it is.
Right.
There are some, those prices kind of forced me to look into some alternatives, and you can get, you can convert essentially those nicer, like trailer-type porta-john units.
Yes.
You can convert those into a permanent system, and you can probably do that for closer to 50,000, but it's still not, not cheap.
Right.
And I don't know what the longevity of those is relative to a standard restroom.
The most communities, like the prefab ones, and they're very attractive, but they're all concrete, so they're very durable, but yeah, they're easily 100,000.
I think it's worth considering because you're going to have families there that are going to have to use a restroom at some point, or little boys, and what are they going to do? They're going to go outside of that gate, and they're going to find a tree, and you're going to have issues with that. So I'm in favor of what you have and going a little bit further and, you know, having some restrooms or something there for the people that are going to be there.
Steven Johnson.
Regarding that, I think we just need more trees. I'm just kidding. Sylvia, a lot, some of the people have said to me over the course of the last year that they think that park cost is a tax dollar, more a tax dollar than a burden. Could you give us a little history on that?
I can. I actually got a call on that earlier this week, and I explained that this has nothing to do with our general fund. This park is, we won't have a true cost on this park until we get engineering drawings. You're not going to have a true cost on your basketball court. You're not going to have a true cost on your paving or even your pavilion area there. So the cost for this park is coming out of Parks and Recs, which I explained last week, are, we have $355,000 that's backlog right now between five and 10 years. So this park, I know we had it down, I think it's, I looked it up today, it was like $144,000 is what was allotted for it, but it's not going to take that, so...
It's not going to take that much?
No, it's not going to take 144,000.
If we do the underground detention and all that, it's not going to take...
If you do the underground detention, what's it going to be? Or just a guesstimate?
I don't know, but I, I'm, hey, Michael answered, but I think 144,000 is probably not a bad number for everything, if you want my opinion, just based on what I've seen.
So in order to get a true number, we would have to get, we would have to actually get engineering drawings correct.
Right. But we could probably do some preliminary numbers, although we have, but I, yeah, I'm just guessing, you're probably around 100, 150,000. But you know, if you only have 144,000, it could, I'm sure it could be done for that, but there's not going to be a lot of money left over.
Yeah.
What about the bathroom that's not going to be available for 144,000?
Well, the bath, that's another 100,000.
Well, we haven't been, we haven't, we don't have a bathroom there now.
It's like I said, there's a basketball court now.
Yeah. It hasn't had a bathroom.
There's one across the road. I mean, if you fix the basketball court over here, that's going to sound like a good park. You've got a full, nice bathroom.
We have money to do that, and the reason that it's not already done is because we need to finish Kennesaw Avenue first. But we do, it is in the capital improvement plan.
Is there other spot, any other than that 144 that is for other years?
There's, there's 355,000 backlog right now. That's not including what we, that's not including what we have that's current. So we, from Pickens County, I believe we got 1,600,000 for the, over the next five years, is it four years or five? And then, it's five, and then, and then there's going to be an additional year, and the rate it's going right now is a little over 300,000. So right at 2 million dollars from the Pickens side, and then Cherokee side, we got 1,600,000. So we already have 200,000 of that, and we're just banking it, and we haven't even used it yet.
Who owns the water tower?
The city owns the water tower.
What about the property surrounding it?
What do you mean?
The houses.
Is that city on property as well? No, the houses, the city isn't owning those houses.
I was under the impression that there was another company that owned that water tower. So if the city of Nelson owns it, then why can't the city of Nelson decide just to pay it?
We can, and again, it goes back to a contract that, I've got to get a copy of the contract, and once I have a copy of that contract, then we'll know how we can address the issue. Well, I'm aware that we have one. I'm aware that the water tower shoots water. I'm aware it's an eyesore, but I have to get a copy of that contract first. Then as soon as I have that, Jeff and I can take a look at it. And I'll have something at our next meeting on that.
Question here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ellen Oliver, 185 Orange Avenue. So I just want to clarify just my understanding. So there's 350-some thousand dollars. So if it was the whole 144 for this park, then there'd still be 200,000 in Parks and Recs to fix the park, right, at Spring Street and School?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
So the 144, maybe that whole park, it probably went down from 150 to 165.
I don't know where the two, I don't know where that came from. I looked in, I looked today in our capital improvement thing, in our capital improvement, and I think I looked in the product there, but it says 144,000. I don't know where the 250 came from.
I don't remember. That's what I was understanding too.
I went, I went and looked today because I had, again, I've been, my heart was cold, but yeah, I looked today, and it's 144,000.
And just, just to add quickly to the budget discussion, the original, we did a budget estimate for the master plan when we did the master plan two years ago. That was essentially done as like a wish list for the park. It was, if budgets no obstacle, what are the things that we could do here? And one of the things that was included in that estimate was a full shade canopy over the entire basketball court, one of those big canvas shade...
I went, I went to look today because I had, again, I've been, my heart was cold. But yeah, I looked today and it's a hundred and forty-one thousand. Here.
And just, just to add quickly to the, to the budget discussion, the, the original, we did a budget estimate for the master plan when we did the master plan two years ago. That was essentially done as like a wishlist for the park. It was if, if budgets no obstacle, what are the things that we could do here? And one of the things that was included in that estimate was a full shade canopy over the entire basketball court. One of those big canvas shade coverings. And that alone was over fifty thousand dollars in the budget. So there were a lot of things in there that were easy to set aside to, to manage.
And it did start out at two hundred and fifty thousand, right?
That sounds close to what the, the original budget estimate was, but again, that, that estimate was sent with a big caveat that. Not knowing what the city budget was for the project, this was sort of a, you know, if we could do everything we wanted in this, in this park, minus the restroom. You know, what, what could we do and what, and what might that cost? So we do that a lot with master plans where we start with the big picture, knowing that, that there are going to be easy pieces of that that we can pull out depending on the final budget for the project. Which we often don't have during the master plan phase. We don't know what, what the city may have available in funds. Sometimes we do and we're given a budget to design to and that's a different process. But a lot of times with master plans, we start with a big vision and then we kind of work with the city to see what we're able to achieve out of that. Sometimes it means cutting things out altogether. Sometimes it means phasing the project over, you know, months or years or, you know, different funding sources. Some people might need to get a grant to do part of it or get donations for part of it. So that's why we like to start with that, with that big picture and see where we go.
And I know our paving, I, I, we didn't, we didn't disclose this, but our paving will be a joint effort between Cherokee County and, and the city. So we'll have a cost savings there as well.
You know, there, there's really two ways to do it. One is you tell us, here's how much money we have and we design to that budget. And you get whatever that budget is. The other option is you say, here's what we want and we design that. And then we do a cost estimate and maybe more or less than you have, but at least it's the things you want. So it's just your preference how you want to approach the project.
Can y'all do a cost estimate on this wall and this basketball court down here also?
Sure.
But we'll know what we got to do with it for sure.
We can.
Be in sync with the master plan.
But we'll be happy to do that, but, but I just, you know, we're not contractors. So, you know, we, we estimate costs and we try to get as close as we can. But we're not the actual ones doing the work. But we can certainly do that.
I mean, this one down here, we got a wall that's falling. Basketball court cannot be used. This one up here can be used. This one down here cannot be used. It's dangerous.
Could you define what this one and that one is?
This one right over here, the big basketball court. You know where I'm talking about?
No, I just know this.
Over here is the city park, the actual city park?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, the retaining wall that's falling.
Oh, right.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. And the one up there that you're talking about building. We need to maintain what we got before we start building used to.
But if I could.
That's not a park up there.
We had this gentleman, I can't remember his name, sir, was concerned about safety, ADA.
Oh, yes. Okay, so. Just looking at that.
You put that little fence, that little hedge row that's at the top, you go on the other side of that, that's my house. I routinely go through there. Now, the water tower is a segregated topic, but, you know, there's three to four inch PVC pipes. They're not cut, but sheared off, which means they're jagged, which I've stepped them a couple of times, but I'm not too happy. But that would be addressed. You need a four-wheel drive wheelchair to get across that crap of a parking lot.
So I don't think anybody's even made any statement that what's up there is for blind. I said, I only was asking questions based on.
No, no, I just wanted to bring it up just.
It does sound to me like the city's got a lot of liability up there. They might want to consider addressing pretty quick as opposed to.
Well, I just thought I'd mention it. I want, I want to have it, you know, and I'm certainly.
It looks like pretty nice.
Yeah, there's rebar, uh, sticky asphalt this high next to the water towers, about four of them. A child would trip and kill themselves easily if they were to address up there. It's very dangerous.
But again, you mentioned that there's some other issues that have to be resolved and certainly I don't know if that was on the table today.
What's on the table today is this part.
They own that property. City people own that property.
But when you.
Well, they just tonight.
They play, they do whatever.
And that was my understanding.
I could be out there. I mean, I found the hole out here. It just.
If they rebar stand up, have Ricky and everyone take a look.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to look. I'm going to, should I? We'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Question here.
Kathy Knox, Hundred and X Drive. Is lighting included in this?
I don't remember if we had any lighting in the original plan.
Our parks close at, at dusk, so we did not. I mean, we, there's lighting out there on the street, but our parks close at dusk, so we don't. Does anybody else have any questions for Walter Kidd?
Did you bring your renderings for the master plan on this park down here that was approved for?
Before that, I brought, I brought stuff with me.
I'd like three dollars on what it is and give us some cost estimates on this one down here too also. On the ice basketball court, basketball court.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. When we looked at that as part of the original master plan for that park, we actually recommended removing that, that court. For a number of reasons. One is was the retaining wall at the time, the cost that would take to repair that wall versus the cost of. Basically regrading that area to create an accessible path to that side of the park across School Street. Right now, there, there isn't a way to get to, down to where Rebecca Lodge is, which we propose to be a picnic pavilion. There's not a way to do that with an accessible walkway. The other challenge with the basketball court that's there now is that just on the other side of it is a stream buffer. So it's, it's hemmed in between the retaining wall and the stream buffer. And it would never really be a full-size court because of that. So the recommendation, the original master plan was actually to, to eliminate that court and do this half-court up at the top.
So completely do away with that one a lot.
Yeah, the, 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 the primary recommendation for the park down here became. A, a nice passive park where the primary amenity is actually a trail system that winds through the entire park. So we recommended actually doing away with the ball field that's there and the basketball court to, to make that a passive park. Primary reason for that, aside from the logistical issues of fixing and maintaining those amenities that are there. Was the fact that in, in park development for the left, I mean, as long as I've been doing this for 20-plus years. The, the most requested amenities in, in parks across all demographics, across all cities and counties, anywhere you look just about. Are passive amenities. And the number one amenity is walking trails. It's the biggest bang for your buck too, because it's about the cheapest improvement you can make in a park. And everywhere that, that we do that, it's the, it's the most used thing in a park is a, is a simple walking trail. So that was the, the, the main thing that we looked at there. In conjunction with doing this half basketball court at this site.
We, we're possibly getting cost estimates on cement and more asphalt and the walking trails out there. We hadn't heard anything else about that.
Kelsey sent the, the county an email about the, the pavement for the walking trails and should have something that for our July meeting. The, and I believe our, I don't know if she added it to it or not, but we, we actually need to revisit the, the folks that are doing the. The wall. So the people that do it, there's an issue with, they don't provide all the necessary stuff for drainage. The second, and, and it'll be added to our next meeting, but our second, the, I think we had two that, that we chose from. One was the less expensive one, which was the one we went with, which was, we went with Palmer Construction. Engineered Earth Solutions is the one that was more, but they actually did a field survey that actually addressed the drainage. And it's, it's, it's more money. But we really, exactly. So this will be back on the agenda with, again, to, to go with somebody different, completely different.
So that, that common construction, a lot of engineering company?
They're, well, they, yes and no. They're, they're not a, they can engineer the wall, but not the drainage. So that was the issue. The other company, which is Engineered Earth Solutions, can do both. It's just a matter of getting it back on the agenda and, and voting to, to go with the other one. We already told the one that got the bid that because they could not provide what we needed for the drainage, that was an okay. We have to go with counsel on it.
So most of what I heard from the kids last time was concerned with this basketball court down here with the ball running and the break and the snakes and the break and everything.
Well, that was Chloe's ladder. That was one person, one child's ladder.
But not this school, the school over here don't go with this playground, the basketball court?
They do as well. And children also go up to this one.
I got it to.
There's children in, in the whole city of Nelson, not just for this court, but there's a need for it up there as well.
Keith, I want to address counsel more time.
Thank you. I've done a preliminary study over the last two years. It's estimated about eighty percent of the children in the city of Nelson are, are within the backbone of Pickens. So the kids that use a basket, basketball court up there would probably quadruple when it's finished and done properly. I've talked to the kids. I've talked to the parents. And if you do a demographic study, that's where the kids are, are up, up the east end of town. Not downtown. It's about eighty-twenty. And so having to climb a steep hill up and down is now something the kids want to do. If that were done, that, that park would be used all the time. And I know there's a lot of adults in here who are anxious about to try to play pickleball. The one, you know, we're talking about forming leagues and, and having a better way of life, having that improved. It would be a tremendous improvement to the city, wouldn't you say, Michael?
I think it would. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a small area, but again, it's, it's something that, that would be, you could get a big bang for your buck for that, for that part of the park.
I feel like we're abandoning our main park and focusing on a quarter acre lot we have on top of the hill. I just don't see it.
You, you still have money to do this part of it?
It's going to take at least two-twenty. That's being.
We have two hundred thousand dollars in our, in our, I think our Cherokee County new sponsor.
Actually, if you want to see it, look around here. So you said you don't see it? I see it. We're all here. I don't know, maybe somebody's against this. I don't know, but we're all here because.
It's our town. We'd like to have a better way of life and some improvement. We do, you know, we get taxes. The SPOSS money has come out of everybody that's in this room. Anybody, I, I'm sure, everybody I've ever shared, and a hundred people I've talked to want this park to be.
These guys just said it was a hundred and forty-five. Where did you get two hundred plus thousand?
That's, that's a guesstimate.
What do we look at professionals?
Do you guys see any way this could be up to two hundred thousand?
Depending on what you do. If you put a restroom in, sure. I mean, again, there are.
The judge said we could give you a budget and you could stick to that. You may have to take away three or two or.
Correct. Are you buying the house next to the park?
I am. I am.
You gonna live in it?
I am.
Home residence?
I am.
Do you know your business? Jesus.
I am.
It's not Airbnb or anything?
Kelsey, I'm handing it out. Well, I, I do plan to live there, but it's really, I don't know what I'm doing.
I'm, I'm, the only reason I bring it up.
You brought it up last time and you bullied Susan and they don't appreciate it. That's not how we do.
But the community needs to know what's going on.
Your community can know what's going on, but that man's got a personal house and if you keep asking questions like that, he can come back and sue us.
And I can tell you right now, I have no plans to do what you're implying. That said, if I did, I'm perfectly authorized to, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, you are. I mean, I'm just asking because some places have put restriction on Airbnb's across parks and stuff. Cities can make restrictions on stuff like that, I think.
Well, they can, but that's what we're not here for this time.
And that's not about that.
I mean, we're here to ask questions. That's what I'm doing.
Of Michael Kidd and about the park.
Yeah, this isn't about the park. This is not about somebody's personal property.
Yeah, I mean, I, I live across from the street from you right now.
Park and anyone can get us in trouble legally. Please quit.
I, I live across the street from you right now and I wasn't really thrilled about my red warning put up, but you did it. It's your property.
I, I built that before you bought the house.
No, you didn't. I was living in that house when you started framing it. I saw it go up from the first piece of, piece of wood.
Okay, let's get back to the park, please.
And I never once told you what you can and can't do with your property.
Yeah, we can, let's get to the park, please. Okay, could you say your name, please?
See, I'm, I'm Valerie Baum. I live up next to you. It's twelve ninety-five. I'm a parent. I have two small children in the community. Although they're not basketball playing age yet, they'll be soon. I think what we can probably all agree on is that we just want safety for all of us and for our children. I think like when it comes down to bare bones, we can all agree, right? We all want safety. Even, you know, if it's the super cheap version, you know, I don't really, you know, I don't mind if it's a super cheap park or whatever. If it gets restrooms, great too. I don't need it to have a restroom. I would just like it to be a safe place. And I think what I keep coming back to is that when I read a child's statement in the paper last week that they don't feel safe, that's what got me. And I thought, hey, that's going to be my kids in there. I'm going to be driving down the road. And that's going to be, you know, me that's going to potentially have to stop really quickly for a fall in the road or a child. And it would just be nice to have it look a little bit nicer. And if it has some park features, some better park features, wonderful. I'm a mom. That's my primary purpose. I'm going to use it.
Thank you. Free comment. Does anybody else have anything before we close this discussion?
I, I got some, I, I just want to reiterate that the SPOSS money is not our property taxes, correct?
Correct.
I still think people are, even in this room here, are getting confused between your property taxes and SPOSS money. So can you explain just a little bit one last time, or you or Brandon or somebody, exactly where the money comes from?
SPOSS taxes is your one percent sales tax that you vote on once every five years. Through your county referendum. And you either vote yes or no. If, if, if the majority vote yes, it passes. And then the county gets a large sum of money from, from, from those sales. And then the county disperses those dollars to each municipality based on the population. That's what I was saying. We received a million and eight, either a million and six or a million and eight from Cherokee. And we have almost two million from Pickens. Those are, that money is, has nothing to do with taxpayers' dollars coming in here. It has to do with your sales tax, giving back to your city for quality of life. Better quality of life for your citizens, your parks, your roads, your streets, your, your buildings. I know that in our Pickens Street, when we went after money at, from Pickens Street, one of our things was community or government buildings. To enhance or build a better city hall. Maybe that would house our museum and maybe do a, a recreational center underneath. So those are things that when we have an opportunity to look at what's feasible and not feasible for our capital improvement plans, we can look at. But it has nothing to do with your tax dollars. This is the people's money and it, it belongs to you.
So this is like we go buy Coca-Cola at the gas station.
Yes.
Go buy something from Walmart. Anything in Pickens or Cherokee County, you want something from there.
It's a sales tax that basically comes from the municipalities within the counties, both counties, Cherokee and Pickens County. So anyone that is purchasing anything or service or whatever out of any of the municipal, anywhere, anywhere in either one of the counties. It's extra money coming from that. It's that one percent sales tax on each sale. It's not your property taxes. It doesn't come, it's not going to increase your property taxes. Only, I mean, you really don't even see this. So it's actually a really good thing that's giving back to the city. We just got to figure out how to use these, these funds wisely, so.
What are our property taxes used for?
Our property taxes are used to maintain, to maintain the city, your maintenance, maintaining of our roads and streets, our common areas, grass cuttings. All that stuff like that. Our, it, it, we do IGA's too.
Streetlights.
Yeah, streetlights, but we do, your council and mayor provide intergovernmental agreements between. between Pickens and Nelson to provide services for the community that we may not have the funds to do.
Fire.
Fire, stuff like that.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're going to pay, you're going to pay that fire tax whether you pay it here or where you pay it there, and that's over $100,000. Was it, was it 110 this year?
Yes.
So you're going to pay that either on Cherokee County taxes or whether you pay it here. Here, you've got a council and mayor that facilitate those services for you, so.
I think I heard you say you guys have over 300,000 in this SPOSS account?
355 in backlog, yes.
For parks and rest.
Okay. So if you don't do this park and don't fix the other basketball court, what are you going to do with that money? Is there any other projects proposed that were...
Not for parks and rest.
The wall control.
The wall, well, we have, we did agree, the council agreed to put, to pave or put cement, pave the walking trails, so we do have that.
And fix the wall.
And fix that wall.
It's not, is it one of those use it or lose it?
Well, you can lose it if the county decides to take it back. Right now, they, they're not.
So it makes sense to spend it sooner rather than later.
It does.
Okay. So we just have to agree as a community where you're going to spend that money?
That's what you're doing here, yes.
Do you see any way of fixing a basketball court down here for the kids on this side of town to use? Also, I mean, with both of them?
What is your, why do you have an issue with putting it here?
I said with both of them.
Yeah, okay.
A half court and a full court, there's a lot of difference.
I know, I know that once we get the drainage problem, the drainage problem was the main issue, because you didn't, you know, before we had a lot of flooding, and it flooded on the basketball court, it buckled, there's a lot of issues with the one down here. Once the Rebecca Lodge is removed and the retaining wall is back up, and we have the drainage issue fixed from the storm drain, we won't have any flooding there, we could grade that area and put in a new basketball court, correct?
You could. We'd have to take a second look with the dimensions based on the stream buffer to see what we could fit.
Since that wall, right now, I think there's like a five-foot gravel area, but if that wall, what the council's proposed is a, is a court wall, could we go all the way up to that court wall with the basketball court?
Would they move the wall back, closer to the road now, also?
You may end up having to ultimately do that. You wouldn't want the court surface to go all the way to the wall. You want, you want a buffer zone, and you probably want a decent buffer between the court and any sort of wall like that. We would never recommend doing the playing surface all the way up to the wall.
Okay.
That would be very dangerous.
Gotcha. I've got one quick question, real quick. Sorry, Mike. Last council meeting, several council members said they hadn't actually read the SPOSS rules and regulations. That was two weeks ago. I just wonder if y'all had a chance to pick them up and look at and see how to actually be able to spend this money and what all y'all have to do.
Now, what do we have to spend it on?
Have y'all read the regulations or anything?
No.
No? Any other ones?
I have packets for the council members in there.
We understand SPOSS, we're not stupid.
Well, last meeting, y'all didn't understand, and the mayor had to explain.
Yeah, we understood.
We understand it.
So I'm just making sure if y'all are voting on stuff, that y'all know what y'all have to do and don't do as far as things that need to be done. So I mean, because y'all are supposed to be representing the city and the citizens.
Exactly.
Mike, how about...
Wanted to kind of follow up on what kind of discussion you were just leading there about the wall, the problem there. I have a kind of a different view of how to go about developing a master plan, which is, well, you know, originally, we had a contract with Root to do that.
We have, we have their original plan from two years ago.
Yeah, but it never got finished, is the point, is we went to a certain part and then kind of shifted away from it. So the, the kind of problem area that you have is you need to look ahead for the next 10 years of how you want to develop a master plan for the entire city. And for example, you have a big piece of property to the south, which is now Trails. Right next to that is, then you have a baseball field and a sort of a middle-aged training area with a restroom already built. Then across School Street, you have the Rebecca Lodge building, which is a challenge because it's vacant and has not been used. We've already spent a bunch of money on it, but we've, you're going to have to figure out how to make that disappear or find a way to use it or something. That's struggling with, just the point you made is that it's really challenging from an ADA point of view for whatever we would do, basketball court, whatever. And then you have to go kind of kitty corner to the little kitty park that we have next to the railroad tracks. I call it a kitty park, that's probably not a good word for it, but I mean, it's aimed at an age group that's very young, is targeted. Then you cross over the railroad tracks, and then you have this big piece of property that was the Marvel Company, and we did the demolition on that building, and we still have an annex, which is not vacant and probably also needs to be. The proposition that we never really got an answer to was to look at all of those pieces of property and certainly this as well, but look at the entire city and then begin to try to look at what is it that we really want to do here? And the challenge is, these pieces are connected to one another or not. And you could ask, well, the basketball issue, well, we have a full court down there, or we have a half court up there. Well, you know, can we really support a court and a half for the city the size of Nelson? Would we be better off to just have a half court? Or would we be better off to have just a full court or build a new full court? And that, if you, my point is, if you tried to make this site work, do you need to have a restroom? Or do you take advantage of the one where you already have a restroom and try to target and concentrate your recreational areas more centralized in the city? There are some downsides to that, but there's also some upsides to it. And the cost of building, like just the restroom as an example, I mean, it's, and if we throw in ADA issues, I mean, there's some real challenges on how, there's a lot of property that's available to us, but to me, we've got, we're kind of doing the back end in front of not having the front end done. We need to have, in my, in my world, a master plan citywide.
Do you recall what happened when, when we got the park bond down there?
The park bond?
There was a park bond that built the park down here.
Oh, when you're, you're going this way?
Yeah, and the can, the can salvaged down here.
Yeah, I got the money for the park bond.
What happened?
What happened?
Yeah, why didn't they get finished? Why didn't the park get finished?
No, it was finished. We used, spent a quarter million dollars on it. It was totally finished. And they just built it there because that was a space that was available to build it, you know, missing in the baseball.
So what I was told by the county is, is that park actually was bigger than it, than it is now, and it didn't, didn't get finished.
No. If they did the trail, was a part, that's the part maybe they're referring to. I have the drawings at home of what was the finished thing, but they've never really, there wasn't anything that they didn't finish. It was done. And they spent, they spent the money pretty quick.
In fact, I think what you're talking about is called a park system plan, and we do this for a lot of communities, and that's, I don't know if you need that here or not, but you know, we look at demographics and populations and all those things and, you know, try to predict how much green space you may need in the next years and what amenities. I mean, that's a common approach.
Well, and that's what we contracted with Root to do. It just never, I don't know where it disappeared, but it hasn't been resolved. And my thinking is, that needs to be in place, because you're going to be competing, should I do 16 restrooms or would I be better off to have 16 community centers or whatever? I'm just making up things. But I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of questions, and we need to have some fundamental design issues to be able to resolve it to.
How, how much notice does the county have to give you to, to take that SPOSS money back from us?
Well, right now, we're not in danger. I've actually spoken to the county about it, so.
But let's just say they got a bond, but maybe it's a back. How much notice do they have to give you?
I don't know.
They could come and get it at any time.
If it's that long, yeah.
So it would be to our benefit to spend it sooner rather than later. I don't care where we spend it, but...
Yeah, Ellen?
Okay, and I'm not disagreeing with your, with your expertise, but really, the park that's at Spring Street and School Street, okay, it does have the restrooms, okay, it does have a walkable playground, a lot of people are there. The other side of School Street, the wall needs to be fixed. Council has already agreed to have that happen, right, so it becomes safe. Then really, the only issue after that, you know, before you take Rebecca Lodge down, is you just got to get the gravel off the court. That's it. That's it. The gravel just needs to be so that the court is, so the court is safe. The cement isn't, you know, isn't cracked and buckled that's going to trip anybody. If we could get the gravel out and maybe the, where the gravel is between there and where the new wall is instead, maybe there's something like sand. I understand that we don't want the, but if you didn't have the gravel kicked out of court, then they could still use the full court, wouldn't cost you anything, you know, until this was done, they could use the, they could use it as a pickleball court, you know, so right now, can't use it as anything, just to get some gravel. And that doesn't seem like that should be such a huge, expensive thing to take care of. And then you would have a full court and a half court.
And hopefully, we'll have, that wall won't take very long, so we can definitely look at other options to remove the gravel and put maybe logs or something down there or...
Yeah, and maybe a little fence, you know, on the one side, just a little like a, almost like a snow fence, just to keep the ball from going down into the creeks. And so again, not a big, not a big expensive fix.
Keith?
Picking up on what Michael was saying, and you're, what you do for a living, Michael's right, it does need to be a master plan. However, it was already laid out in the master plan for this park here, that that court goes away because it comes a walking trail. It's a whole different environment, a recreational environment. Did you say that that's true, Michael?
That, that was our recommendation in the master plan for this park. What I will say, following up on, on what Mr. Havlin mentioned a minute ago, I agree 100% that the best approach is a system-wide master plan that would, that would address these issues that we're, that we're talking about, whether we need a basketball court here or a basketball court there. What we were authorized to do under our contract was a master plan for this park, as a standalone park, and a master plan for the half basketball court part.
That's not true. The contract that we did with you was to do the master plan for the entire city.
But Mike, I was never authorized by the city to do a full system-wide master plan.
Yeah, it's in the capital plan.
Can I listen right down?
I'll look at that, but that's not what I saw.
I wasn't done with my question, and I was trying to say, picking up on Mike's, and it seems like, for lack of a better word, the master plan, that's it, this is not a huge city. This park is intended to be a walking, which is the most popular thing in the demographic that you find across the nation, mortal walking path. That would require the court coming out and the Rebecca Building coming out, new sidewalks coming in, and it's a whole different environment, where this is for kids who live up in that area to have a, every recreation, a place to recreate and have fun, and a nice place with some trees. The women now don't have to sit on the ground with their kids watching their kids play. So it, they're two completely different environments. One is sports, for the lack of a better word, the other is a, is a, you know, a trail place where you can walk or bike or whatever the case may be. Is that safe to say that these environments are, work together, but they're different?
Yes.
Totally different, Laura. I guess three questions. Roughly, I understand you have over $300,000 SPOSS money in the bank now. How much do you get each year, roughly?
I'll have to go back to your own one.
Third question. What does an estimated maintenance cost for this basketball court after? Because that money, the maintenance cost comes out of the general fund. The SPOSS money doesn't cost us, pay us anything.
Sure. It depends on, it depends on what we do. I mean, what's the, what do you think the maintenance is going to cost on a half basketball court?
They're already cutting the grass, right?
We're already cutting the grass, yeah.
I mean, I would think you, you could absorb it with your, I don't know how much of, what city resources, I think you would absorb a little bit in the cost, I wouldn't think.
So it's just, it's just a nominal fee of whatever it costs to maintain it, like grass cutting around it, things like that?
Yeah, grass cutting. I guess you, if you look to the future, you're going to say, well, in 20 years, we have to resurface it, and that has, but I don't know that you're probably looking that far ahead to things like that.
Gotcha, okay.
Now, if you did the bathroom, I mean, there'd be a little bit more because I would have to be cleaned.
And that's another whole issue, the bathroom thing. We have a hard enough time keeping, keeping these down here clean and safe.
What do you get annually on SPOSS money?
430,000 estimated.
How much?
430,000 estimated.
Is that just for parks or is that parks and?
That's parks and transportation.
Is it, is it a 50-50 split or how's it?
I'm not sure exactly what the percentages are based upon that, but I know like with the Pickens SPOSS, it's more open to where it's just general government projects, so it can be used for parks and rest. So say, we do this project, and we do run over, we can, if it's in our plans, our capital improvement plan, we can allocate those funds to finish park projects if needed. Or if we want to create new park projects, we can allocate those funds as well.
Yes, sir.
I guess we're about to want to wrap this up, but I'd like to just state that all the people that are here tonight, you know, we've come forward with our ideas. Now, responsibility falls on the council. Now, I've been coming to meetings for over 20 years, and, and like 2013, we were talking about the basketball court down by the creek. I would like to see some leadership from the council to move these projects forward, because we have, members come and members go, but we're talking about studies that were done that were never followed through on. So that would be my suggestion. We've done all we can do, but to keep coming and keep talking about it. Let's get some leadership going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. If there's any other questions for the council, we can make a motion for adjournment. You get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion there.
You have a second?
Second.
Alligator?